Welcome, everybody, councilors, and anybody else who's on the YouTube. And welcome to the 2020 Financial Plan. We acknowledge that the land on which we are gathering Treaty II land, known as First Nations Territory, homeland of the Anishinaabe, Ojibwe, and Mayte Nation. Be resolved that council accepts a special agenda as presented? Anybody against? Carried? Now, since this is public hearing, we have to follow Sections 162 states. Each member of the council must attend the public hearing unless the member is excused by the other members from attending the hearing, is unable to attend owing to illness, is required under the Municipal Conflict Council Conflict of Interest Act to withdraw from the hearing. Be it resolved that council excuses the following members from the May 4, 2020, public hearing. Is everybody here? Is Deputy Mayor Riel on?
Al, I looked through, and I believe everybody is on.
Yes, I'm here, Al.
Oh, and Devin? Devin Sekailo, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here, Al.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we don't have be resolved that council now adjourns to hear the public hearing as scheduled. Council will now commence to hear representations from the city of Dauphin, and any other persons wish to make representation for this scheduled public hearing. We will now proceed with the public hearing for the 2020 Financial Plan for the city of Dauphin. Would the city manager like to speak in favor of the 2020 Financial Plan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, I would. What I'm going to do here is share my screen so everybody can see my PowerPoint presentation.
Opening remarks.
All right, can you guys all see that?
Charlotte?
Yes, can you see that?
Yeah.
All right, Al, you want to start with some remarks?
Yeah. Thank you to all the staff, whether in administration or public works, fire department, all contributed to the making of this financial plan. And especially, I hate pointing pointing out, but the Director of Finance, Scott Card, worked many hours on this, as he does every year, and I really thank him and all the staff for putting together this financial plan. The process started in November. Counselors submitted projects for costing, and Mayor and council met in April to balance the budget. However, at the start of 2020, presented a couple challenges for us. Two events. Definitely, the January 24, 2020, is a Black Day for the city of Dauphin and Parkland, with the closing of the Correctional Institute to be closed, despite many protests and presentations to government. It is scheduled to close on May 31. The next thing that really threw us the economy into a conundrum is the pandemic. We're gradually breaking out of it, and with the two, Mayor and council-directed and men, for a zero tax increase this year. And I think, as the city manager will go through, you'll see that this happens. The thing is, you keep hearing it. It's the new normal for everybody. What that means is mainly daily changes is the new norm. The budget concentrates on infrastructure projects. Therefore, plus, therefore, we have to start early as possible because there's weather delays and startup of getting material. Also, we've heard from the provincial government that there'll be no cuts in their funding. And they assured us, Minister Ilers and Wharton were here on Friday, and they assured us of that. So with those guidelines, we'll ask the city manager to present the financial plan. Thank you.
Again, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and I thank you to everybody who's watching this and for attending and participating in the public hearing for the city of Dauphin's 2020 Financial Plan. I want to thank council for their direction this year, as the mayor pointed out. This has not been a usual or typical year for us, and we appreciate that, and I also want to thank administration for the work that it takes to put our budget together. To follow the rules for public hearings under the municipal act, public hearings must be accessible to the public, both to hear it and to ask questions. So therefore, because we have been holding our meetings online, we've made the following provisions so that the public can participate. We are allowing people to call in. We are allowing them to join on Microsoft Teams, which is just like what I'm doing here and all of council. And also, we are allowing people to watch on YouTube and have turned on comments on YouTube. So as part of the proceedings, after my presentation, the mayor will ask if there are any questions either for or comments for or against the hearing in the information presented, and at that time, people could step forth and ask questions, but I do thank everybody for being patient with this process. It is not easy to make all these coordinations, but I thank everybody for their patience. I anticipate my presentation will take about 20 minutes, but I'm not sure. So here we go. Let me see. If I can advance a slide. So as I said, the municipal act requires municipalities in the province of Manitoba to hold a hearing prior to adopting their financial plan, so that's what we're doing here today. We are sharing with the public the city of Dauphin's financial plan, and that's both for the general fund and the utility fund. To perhaps reiterate some of the points that the mayor has already made, the 2020 budget, we will see no tax increases, and we're focusing on some of the fundamentals. Continued level of spending on our municipal infrastructure, like roads, sidewalks, and water distribution. No cuts to programming. And I do want to highlight a few things that we're doing to help ratepayers. One of them is, we are delaying the tax due date until September 30. Usually, in prior years, the city of Dauphin's taxes were due on July 31. However, because the province announced that school taxes will be due on September 30, the city of Dauphin has decided to mirror that change, so our taxes will not be due until September 30. Those who want to pay on or before the previous date, or any time up to that, we will take payments at any time, but no interest will be incurred for payments until they're made after that. Secondly, is that the first quarter utility bill usually is due on May 15. This year, it is due on June 15. We thought we'd give everybody another month to be able to make that utility bill. And then going forward for future utility bills in 2020, we will assess what the situation is like in our community and what's the status of our economy at that time, and may make decisions about delaying due dates at that time. And something else that council decided to do for 2020 was to provide a grant for a new group in Dauphin called the Crisis Prevention Task Force. And this group was put together before the COVID-19 pandemic situation. However, their services have become quite important and highlighted in in these last couple months. So just to highlight a little bit about them, they are the ones who are providing the Under One Roof Program, and they provide meals on Mondays, social services in the evening, and care packages to families. They provided some housing education to help renters and landlords better know their roles, to produce better relationships and better outcomes. And also identification clinics, which is funding for people who may not have the funds to get birth certificates. And so once one obtains a birth certificate, those individuals can then get social insurance numbers, bank accounts, rental properties, and access social services. So that is something that council decided to support for 2020. So getting a little bit more into the budget. Our budget is divided into two funds. One is the general fund, which is composed of revenue and expenditures, and the utility fund, which is revenue and expenditure. So things that fall under the general fund would be public works, recreation, protective services, economic development, tourism, and administration. And then in the utility fund, that encompasses our water and our wastewater systems. So first, we'll talk about the general fund and the revenue streams. There's four of them. Provincial school tax, which is our education support levy, our local school tax, and for the city of Dauphin specifically, is only to Mountain View School Division. The municipal tax, which is the municipal tax portion of what we collect for the city of Dauphin. And then we get other revenue in the form of grants, user fees, and fines. Well, you will start to talk a little bit about the provincial school tax or the education support levy. For residential properties this year, as it has been for many years, it's set at zero, but for commercial property, it is set at 8.828 mils, and it raises $970,308. Something to note is that this is a tax that the city collects on behalf of the province. The city then passes it on to the province, and the city has no control over how much the province asks for this or what this is set at. Second is a local school tax. So as I said, for Mountain View School Division, they set their mill rate at 14.730 this year, and that raises $4,771,259. And similarly to the provincial school tax, Mountain View School Division sets this, we collect it for them, and then we pass it on. We do not keep any of this tax or the previous one for city expenditures. And something to note, the province did announce that there will be some changes coming to school taxes in Manitoba, but the city has no details about those changes at this time. Next one is our municipal taxes. This year, the city of Dauphin has set our mill rate at 18.908, and we will raise $6,449,919 to do that. And so when we talk about there's no tax increase, what we did was we set the mill rate to be able to collect the same amount of taxes in 2020 on the same properties as we did in 2019. And then, as you'll see, there is an increase from 2019 to 2020 in how much the money was raised, but that is only due to new construction. So construction that was added between 19 and 20, we can now tax for it, and that increases only because of the new construction, not increased taxes. The last stream is the other revenue, and some of the highlights for this, we estimate there will be $125,000 of taxes added in 2020. We project that we will raise $96,000 through business licenses. The provincial municipal operating grant, set at $645,145. Same since 2016, and I do know that through the Association of Manitoba Municipalities, we have been lobbying the province to increase that so that we can offset some of the inflation that we have to cover. However, this year, we are thankful that the province is not clawing back on any of that money. Next one to highlight is the Public Safety Grant, $939,791, and that is to help offset policing. Federal grants of $505,291. A lot of that is a federal gas tax. And then we have other provincial grants of $246,451. The next couple slides have a lot of numbers on it, but we include that just so that you can see the progression of school taxes, municipal tax rates, and the total mill rate over the last few years. And so in 2012, just to highlight municipal tax, municipal mill rate was 26.999, and in 2020, it is set at 18.908. That's for residential properties. A similar slide for commercial properties. The mill rate is the same. Provincial education support levy is added on to that, so we can see the changes in mill rates for each of those components over the last nine years. Something that everybody wants to know, how will this budget affect my property taxes? So these next two slides talk about that. And I use an example of a $100,000 house, or you can think of it as for each $100,000 that your property is assessed at. This is what we will be looking at. So in 2020, for the municipal portion of taxes, per $100,000 of assessment, we will collect $850.86. School taxes on that would be $622.85 for a total of $1,473.71. So net change per $100,000 of assessment would be a decrease of $144.67. And looking at it from the commercial side, same $100,000 worth of assessment, adding up the municipal education support levy and the school taxes, local school division taxes, that would end up to be $2,760.29, or a reduction of $212.42. So that summarizes the revenue for the general fund. Now, I'd like to highlight some expenditures. So we have headings in our budget, and that mirrors the provincial budget requirements. The form is that we must fill out and submit to the province. So these headings mirror that. So in the general government services, we have just over $1.3 million scheduled or slated for that, an increase of 1.36 over what was budgeted in 2019. It's going to have a bit of water in here. 1% increase in wage requirements. That does include some fewer expenses for travel and meetings and conferences because we, right now, in the immediate future, do not have any meetings or conferences to travel to outside of Dauphin, and we are unsure of what the fall will bring. In our community grants and appropriations, we did increase that by $15,000, plus some inflation, and that $15,000 was for the Crisis Prevention Task Force. And this also includes the city's contribution to the Dauphin Regional Airport Authority, which is $92,698. Protective Services is the next category, and that is the largest portion of our budget. And there was a 5.29% increase in that over what was budgeted in 2020. Our CMP, there was an increase of 7.87%, and that is solely dependent on the wage increases that fluctuate from year to year. The second component of Protective Services is our fire department that I'd like to highlight. Some of the items that they are slated to be replacing or getting this year is some upgrades to their trucks and radios, some building upgrades, as well as their safety gear, turnout gear, coveralls, things like that. What we see each year is that their fire department equipment is extremely specialized, which means expensive, in brackets there, but very necessary for our fire department. Another point to mention is recognition for the firefighters, and there is portions of the budget to go into that, which is extremely important. Firefighters do put their life on the line for us, and we do appreciate them. Next portion of the general fund is Transportation Services, or what we might call Public Works. Just over $1.8 million in that category, and an increase of 1.41% from 2019. Several years ago, council gave direction to administration, and that still remains the same today, to spend approximately $1 million on streets and sidewalks. So this year, adding up road capital, sidewalk capital, and then road and sidewalk operating, that does take us to $1.03 million for those components. An increase could also be in this area could be attributed to full staffing for the entire year. We had a few vacancies last year. I want to note that we are doing a lot of sidewalk repairs this year. There's a 75% more than 2019. Both council and administration do believe in active transportation and getting out and moving, and by increasing or upgrading our sidewalk and active transportation opportunities, that helps us achieve that goal. We will be doing some more work on drainage study and design for Main Street South and stormwater retention or stormwater management throughout the entire city. We do have some bridge repair scheduled for Fourth Ave Southwest, some rubber flanges. Usually, we do not do a lot of work on that on that bridge, but we monitor it to make sure that it is working properly and in good repair, but this year, we need to do something with that. And also, as mentioned, we are working on an active transportation plan that will review the entire community and provide guidance for where we can connect parts of our community and get people moving. Environmental health, just under $1 million for this one, slight increase. This section of the budget includes garbage collection, yard waste collection, recycling, and maintenance of our waste disposal grounds. Next section is Public Health and Welfare Services, $33,749. We have seen no change in this for many, many years, and it is a one-tier social assistance payment to the province of Manitoba. Before this payment was just made to the province, we used to fund a social assistance program through City Hall, but that has been taken over by the province. Next one is Environmental Development Services. And so there's a small decrease in that. And things that encompass in this area is Dutch Elm disease-related costs, Intermountain Conservation or Intermountain Watershed District, that's an error in my acronym. I apologize for that, and the Communities in Bloom. And to note, this is a non-judging, it would have been a judging year, however, due to the pandemic, it is a non-judging year, and so there could be some decreases from that. And also, we had a tree giveaway program that we're really excited about highlighting for 2020, and we want as many people to participate in that as possible. For Economic Development Services, we do see a significant decrease in this section of the budget, but it is somewhat unfair to compare it from year to year because it totally fluctuates depending on development and the programs going on. But a few things to highlight, Economic Development still has incentive programs available that they have had in the past. Some residential, commercial tipping fees, spec homes, and the Dauphin Business Park. They will be working on a visitor guide again, consistent signage throughout parks in Dauphin, as well as gathering up aerial and other photos for future use in promotion. Something to note is that the Dauphin District Vet Board appropriation does come out of this category. In terms of Recreation and Cultural Services, $1.9 million there, and there is an increase of 8.1% overall. A few highlights from here, there's increased grants to the Dauphin Regional Library and a small increase to the Parkland Regional Library. Some of that does account for a change in the accounting process that we sorted out with them this year. But there was also a request and granting of some increased funding. There's an increase to Dauphin Recreation Services operating by 8%. And I'm going to also say that there was extra for the Crisis Prevention Task Force. Talking about capital expenditures for the general fund, so just over $3 million in that. It's decreased from 2019, and that is mostly due to the federal gas tax. It was doubled last year in 2019 from about $450,000 to $900,000, and so we are back in line for our usual gas tax money for that. So some of the expenditures that we will be doing that are capital in nature. In the Infrastructure section, we've got some reconstruction of Sixth Ave Northeast, reconstruction of McNeil Place, mill and overlay of Third Ave Northeast, as well as Fourth Street Northeast. For sidewalks, we've got some reconstruction of First Street Northeast and Whitmore Avenue East. For environmental, we have increased, or we have started a project, a solar system at our shop, and we will be finishing that in 2019. We have an electric vehicle charger. We have an electric vehicle charger project that we will be doing at City Hall, but that does depend on grant funding. Residential recycle depot upgrades, that's at the site just across from the Rotary Arena. And as well, there will be some work done at the waste disposal site, compost diversion, compost section diversion center, and some upgrades to the wifi out there, so that we'll have internet connection out there. For equipment replacement, we do have, and it already has been done, and was part of the 2020 provisional budget that we passed at the end of 2019, purchase of a new excavator. And then we have some smaller purchases there, cube fan for the utility, and a tire changer. For the fire department, their capital looks like provision for a 3/4 ton pickup truck, radios, and a forcible entry prop. And something to note with the addition of the truck, currently, there are still members who may take out their personal vehicles to a call, because there's no room in the fire truck fleet, so we do want to be able to provide that for firefighters. Then we have a list of what we call other, which is a catch-all for every, all the other projects that we will be doing. And so I don't specifically want to go through each one of these, but they do add up to approximately 605,107. So some work at CN Station. We hope to do an indigenous statue with partners, partnership donations from that. A land purchase, which has been in the works for about three years, that we are confident that will get done in 2020. As I mentioned, City Park signage, a few recreation contributions, some IT work, some work at the Watson Art Center, a few, couple things at the shop, some economic development, and some work at City Hall. So here's a summary of the general fund capital expenditures, all in total, just under $2 million. Moving to the utility fund, and again, starting with revenue, we estimate the water revenue to be $2,240,500 this year, and the wastewater revenue to be $466,000. This is a small decrease from 2019 due to the lower projection of water sales. Two, and two reasons. One is people are great at conserving water, and that is wonderful, and also that there is no percent increase between 2019 and 2020. And actually, it has been the same since 2018. And we wanted to wait until, we wanted to wait for an announcement from the, from the province and the federal government regarding our lagoon grant application in 2019. If we had gotten that grant, we would have to do some borrowing for that, and that would be part of the utility board rate study. However, we did not get word in 2019, and we are uncertain if we will get word in 2020, or at least positive word in 2020. So we will be doing a rate study in 2020 to review our water and utility rates, water and wastewater rates, and if we find out about the lagoon, we will include it. However, if we do not find out, we will still go ahead with the rate study. In terms of operating expenditures, we anticipate that it will cost us 1.8, just over $1.8 million to operate our utility, which is a decrease of 7%, 7.34% over 2019. And for wastewater, $391,950, which is an increase of just under 4%. A couple of the highlights there, we have some software subscriptions that we'll be adding to it, and our facility and the infrastructure, especially the water treatment plant, is becoming 20 years old, and all credit goes out to the staff who maintain all of our infrastructure. But water and wastewater are some of the oldest infrastructure in the city, and they do a great job of keeping the water and wastewater flowing. In terms of capital expenditures, this year, we've got some water main relining on Park Crescent, Fifth Ave Northeast, and Centennial, some water main renewal, which will be a street dig-up, Fifth Ave Southeast, wastewater main relining, Third Avenue Southeast. And we did do some aqueduct replacement in 2019, which we have to finish up in 2020, and that aqueduct is the main and only pipe that takes water from our water treatment plant into the city, so extremely important. Capital expenditures for 2020 are $591,996. Other capital expenditures, orthophosphate equipment, that's something that we're looking at to help mitigate the exposure of lead in our water, brown every new reservoir to put in a security fence, some leak detection equipment, MRX reading equipment, and that is for the wireless water meters that we put in a few years ago. The equipment does need upgrading, so we're looking at that. A freezing machine, I did not know that existed, but very excited about a purchase of a new one. And as was started in 2019 and will continue for 2020, Manitoba Water Services Board is providing grant funding for lift stations to, or upgrades to wastewater lift stations 1 and 2, as well as ultraviolet disinfection at our water treatment plant. So that line out of capital expenditures of 2.193 million, 50% of that would be funded by the Manitoba Water Services Board. So that concludes the utility fund and the operating fund, both revenue and expenditures. I do have a slide about our debt analysis. So from the end of 2009 to the end of 2020, we have some review here of what our general fund and what our utility fund debt or total debt was. Just to talk a little bit about that, general fund, we have only one outstanding borrowing that we're paying on, and unfortunately, the way that it's set up is we cannot pay off this debt without paying the penalty. So without paying basically all of the interest out. So instead of paying it out and getting it off the books, we keep that money in our bank account and, and just pay the, pay that. So we are looking at four items in our utility, and the total debt that we have right now is $859,000, 859,152. Let's talk a little bit about our reserve funds or the savings account. I have a comparison from 2011, and then what we project to the end of 2020. So right now, we are estimating that between general reserve and specific purpose reserves, we will have $8.19 million. And in our utility, $330,000, for a total of $8.5 million. In 2020, we are looking at adding $1,083,391, and expending $2,886,798. And a lot of that expenditure is for those two Manitoba Water Services Board's projects. Several years ago, Council of the Day set a threshold for the amount of money that are in the reserves being at least one year's tax take. So what we could see, it was just over $6.4 million this year. It was our tax take. So to compare, we had $4.8 million total in reserves in 2011, and we have surpassed that six, that six, about six and a half million dollar mark, so that we do, we are in a good financial position in terms of our savings account. Bring me to the end of my, end of my presentation. If anybody has questions, we'll let the, we'll let the mayor go back to moderating the public hearing, and I will see if there's questions from the audience on my devices here.
Any persons or councillors want to speak in favor in support of the financial plan? Are there any questions on the lines there, General Manager? Or, yeah, City Manager?
So I do have a question from Councillor Duba, but Councillor Duba, can you unmute your mic and ask your question?
Yes, my question is, the 8%, just, I'll go back to my message that I had. Stay with me for a second here. Does the, does the RM actually, my spell check is going crazy on my cellphone there. Does the email, or does the RM match the 8% operation grant on their portion of the operations grant? Like, like we're, we're putting 8% in on, from, from the city, does the RM match the 8% on their, their percentage of the, of their contribution for, for the operations?
And you would, yeah, you're talking about recreation, is that right?
Correct.
The, the answer is no. The Arm of Dauphin does provide an grant to the, to Dauphin Rec Services, and they do increase each year by the cost of living, and so the city has to make up the difference.
Okay, fair enough. I was just asking, just asking, okay, thank you kindly.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, we have about a 30-second delay on YouTube, but more than a minute has gone past since we opened the floor for questions, and there is no questions online.
Are there any councillors who wish to speak in favor of the financial plan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councillor Duba, I just want to thank administration for, you know, a tremendous job this year doing the budget. We, as, as we all know, it's been a difficult year, and we were able to, to move the budget and to the circumstances that we're in, and great job. So thank you, thank you for that.
And Councillor Bellmer, I'd just like to support what Councillor Duba said. I think a tremendous amount of work has gone into this. I think it was very thoughtful in terms of what does our community need at this point, and certainly, things are kind of changing as we go with the pandemic, and I think our staff is in tune to that, and I think if they need to adjust as we go, that they are very capable of making those changes on our behalf. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any, any person who wishes to speak in objection to the financial plan?
This is Councillor Oz, and I'm not speaking in objection, but I did want to ask a few further questions. We've got till June 15th to present our budget, but I wondered, does any, any notice come, will the province reduce business taxes, especially with the pandemic that we have going, and especially small businesses? Is there any word on that? I was trying to see if there was any plans.
Thanks for the question, Councillor Ilers. So in terms of, I'm not quite sure of your question, but I do know that the province provides to municipalities a general operating grant, and we got confirmation that we will continue to receive the full amount of our operating grant.
Okay, but we collect taxes for the small businesses. Is there any word on that, if that will continue at the amount that was listed in the budget?
So we collect taxes on all assessment, and it is, for the municipal portion, is the same for residences as it is for small and large businesses. School taxes, we collect on behalf of the Mountain View School Division, and so we take those and provide them to the school division. And then the education support levy, which is only for commercial zoned property or commercial rated property, again, we collect that on behalf of the province, and we give that to the province. So there's been no word that any of that would change.
My next question is, we have a certain line that's for the taxes that we collect, residential taxes. Given the state of what's happening in our community, I guess we would have to make adjustments if we do not collect the amount, and is there a game plan in that respect?
So we, we set the amount of what we're going to collect, and if there is an inability of any property owner to pay their taxes, we would still use the same budget numbers that we would, that we've set here, but we would not have that income. So we do have provisions with our lending institution that if we do not have enough money in the bank to cover it, we would go into our overdraft.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to make presentation, city plan, on the financial plan? Anything on your YouTube or any other devices that are open to the public?
No, Mr. Mayor, there have been no questions. I came through.
Okay, thank you. The representations for the public here for the City of Dauphin 2020 Financial Plan are now completed. Be it resolved, the council now reconvenes to the special council meeting. The public hearing for the 2020 Financial Plan be now con- Whereas due notice was given with respect to the 2020 Financial Plan, and whereas no objections were received to the said plan, be it resolved that the 2020 Financial Plan be accepted as presented. Further be it resolved that council authorizes the mayor and city manager to duly sign and seal the 2020 Financial Plan and forward it along with Bylaw 082020, the 2020 tax levy, once it is passed to Manitoba Municipal Relations. And this is moved by Deputy Mayor Riel and seconded by Councillor Bellmer. All in favor, or no, we'll say, anybody against this? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Moved by Councillor Duba, seconded by Councillor Ilers. Be it resolved that Bylaw 082020, being a bylaw to City of Dauphin to set the 2020 tax levy, be now read for a first time. Any objection, any? Any objection, any? But any of the counselors against? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Moved by Counselors De Kylo and seconded by Counselor Lachlan. Be it resolved that bylaw 092020, being a bylaw of the city of Dauphin to provide for the payment of taxes be now read a first time. Any objections? Not in favor? Hearing none, motion is carried. Be it resolved, moved by Counselor Deputy Mayor Riel, seconded by Counselor Bellamare. Be it resolved that this meeting does adjourn at 5:53.